We will move to item 12.
Item 12, Department and Committee Reports Non-Action Items. 12A, 2018 Budget Hearing Number Three, Original Adopted Budget. Department Office Critical Needs Presentation. Sherri Cassidy, County Controller, Administration and Financial Services.
Now, looking at our calendar, we are ahead of schedule.
We are. We're ready, though.
They're ready to proceed? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nikki Simmons, Assistant County Controller. We're just here to continue our budget hearings today. So first, we have our Honorable Clerk and Recorder.
Good morning, Mr. President and County Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to present the Clerk and Recorder's Budget to the Board of County Commissioners this morning. So the offices of the Clerk and Recorder ministers county elections, recording marriage licenses, that's a fun thing we get to do for folks, property records, motor vehicle transactions, liquor licensing for unincorporated El Paso County, and serves clerk to the Board of County Commissioners. My vision is to provide services to citizens faster, better, and less expensively while sacrificing customer service. I worked 20 years in manufacturing and engineering for high-tech firms, and we were always driven on delivering our product cheaper, with better quality, with fewer resources, and I take that with me into this position. And we do astounding things when you look at, we are a governmental entity, and when we compare ourselves to other entities and to other motor vehicle offices, particularly in the region. And to carry out that goal, I have seven departments within our office, and I'll give you an overview of that. You know, our office seeks to provide the best customer service possible and to maximize our efficiencies. Our ability to do so is primarily attributed to our amazing people. And I've worked with a lot of amazing people in my engineering career. I worked with the engineer that developed the Liquid Crystal Display, and I find just as amazing people in my line of work today that are dedicated, hardworking, and smart. Our chart on the next page is our org chart. I have 148 full-time people and approximately 30 part-time people, and they are led by Mary Bartelson, who is my chief deputy. Mary has nearly 30 years of experience. She worked in a recording, she worked in election doing data entry, she's worked in procurement, she's worked in every function, and she is truly a hard-working, dedicated professional that makes our office a success. She has directly under her our Information Services Department. We have over 150 applications and programs that we support to carry out our work, and we have our own small little IT department, but we rely also on the county IT department to carry out those things. And we have a great relationship with Jeff Eckert and his team. In elections, I have Liz Elson, who has 22 years of experience, and Liz is retiring here after the first year, many, many, many years of experience. She is the Dean of Elections in the state of Colorado, and many, many, many counties turn to her for questions and seeking solutions over the many years. She'll be greatly missed, but she has delivered amazing years of service to the county and to our department. Our recording department is headed by Jimmy Van Buskurt, and he has 10 people that records, you know, any public document that comes through our office. Vicki Rattery, who's seated to your right here, heads up our Board of County Commissioners. Kelly Lindgren, who has 15 years of experience in motor vehicles, she oversees the largest department. We have five offices, and a large number of our employees are based out of motor vehicle. And then finally, Matty Albert, who is our PIO and does a little HR and a little finance. And I do want to say, over the last several months, that we've received a big boost from the county HR department, providing HR services to our staff. A little bit in more detail about our motor vehicle department. Our motor vehicle department helps citizens register their vehicles, process registration renewals, renew driver's license, issues and prints, plates and placards. El Paso County has five offices, including the one on Fort Carson that we're very proud of having opened last year. And we are the only DMV office on a military installation. There is one in the Pentagon, but we are the only one in the country that has that service for our men and women. We're also the only county in the state that has Saturday office hours, and two months ago, we started introducing our kiosses, of which we have one at CSC and our 24/7 at UTC. And this morning, we're installing the one that will be housed here in Centennial Hall, and then tomorrow, the one at Powers. Elections, we oversee and administer elections for El Paso County. The four-time award-winning department maintains the voter registration system for the county, prepares and mails ballots, hosts voter services and polling centers, and provides accurate results for our elections. And they also administer elections for special districts as requested. Recording, you know, in our country, free markets, capitalism is important, bedrock of why we are successful as a country, and it starts with property rights. And our recording department records that right, that right that you own that property. And that piece of property is the greatest wealth creator in the world, and that's why we've been able to maintain a high standard of living. So they do some very important work. They record, index, copy, and preserves all permanent documents, real estate records. They also are responsible for issuing marriage licenses and civil unions. Clerk to the Board, the Clerk to the Board records proceedings and decisions of this Board, as well prepares the agenda and maintains minutes for the meeting. The Clerk to the Board is also the contact person for liquor and medical marijuana licensing matters for El Paso County. They also perform the property tax appeals, which we call the Board of Equalization. Communications, our communications department consists of two people. They review and answer inquiries from the press, the public, and other groups. They help fulfill Colorado open record requests that are made to our department. They inform the public of various outreach programs that we have, especially around election time. They track legislation that is important to our operation. And operations, they kind of are the glue that helps us put everything together. They provide the logistics. They're kind of like that old BASF commercial. They don't make the products that we know, but they make the products that we know better. So they're the glue, or they're the entity that make us, whether it's elections or motor vehicle recording, makes it possible for us to do what we do. And then our HR and finance department. How are we able to do that? What mandates, what entitles or allows us to do things? There's another number of things in statute that outlines the services we offer our citizens. Our general clerk office and fees are contained under Title 30 in the Colorado revised statute. Motor vehicle functions are governed under Title 42. Elections are governed under Title 1 of the Colorado revised statute, recording under a couple of various entities from Title 30 to bits and pieces in 38 and Title 14. And the Clerk of the Board is governed by Title 30, and the Board of Equalization in Title 39. So one of our goals as a county and how we assist in making sure that happens is to provide financial stability in a transparent and effective way for our citizens. And we're mandated, and we have a couple of things that we do to try and meet that goal. So early last year, we worked with the Arapahoe County Clerk and Recorder, Matt Crane, and we came up with this idea to extend our services, so we can renew plates by mail, by phone, by online, and by coming into our office. While we love our customers, we would like them to have other options in which to renew their services. So Matt Crane and I came up with this idea, this legislation, to provide kiosses, and that these kiosses would be able to renew people's plates no matter where they are in the state. And so our kiosses have been running for several months, and we're going to have an important announcement on December 1st, where we are now going to be, we have tested, and we're going to be able for someone from Arapahoe County who finds himself here for the day can renew their plates, and likewise, someone in Denver for the day, or if they're working up there, can renew their plates at a kiosk up there. So that is one way that we are trying to extend more and more services to our citizens. Over the many years, we have been doing driver's license services. This board in 2006 gave the Clerk and Recorder the authority to add those services to our menu. It was during a time when the state had some budget crunches, and rather than have the service to our citizens decrease in long ways from, we stepped in. The county commissioners gave us the funding to be able to do that. And we're, today, two out of three services when it comes to driver's license, we are the first choice for citizens to come and provide driver's license services. Earlier this year, we implemented the new drives program for driver's license, and that has been successful and reduced our wait times. The other thing I'd like to do is, from a time when I had kids that became 16 and they got their driver's license, I would have to go over to the office on Union there and sit there for many, many hours. And I resolve, once I get into a place where I can do so, I'm going to change that. So my goal is next year to implement that first-time drivers can come and start that process with us. So I wanted to do it this year, but it was important that we implement this drives program and get it kicked off well. So that's my goal next year, is for a lot of parents who have a juvenile that are seeking out their licenses, that we would be the first person they come to, to get those services. Providing ongoing election support to local jurisdictions. Each year, that depends on the jurisdiction as to whether or not they have something on the ballot. This year, we had 17 intergovernmental agreements, and we provide their services. So we have the technical know-how, and they reach out to us to run those elections for them. We also have a mandate to increase voter service and accessibility throughout the community. And we did this this past year, is we had nine VSPCs for elections. We're only required to do five, but we wanted to reach out and make sure that every citizen had an opportunity to access the ballot box. We had mobile drop boxes throughout the community. A lot of our jurisdictions, while they appreciate that we have the technical expertise to run their elections, they like to still have that connectiveness with their citizens voting on their matter before them. So we had mobile drop boxes at a number of the jurisdictions. And it also helps us to determine, is there a legitimate reason to put a permanent drop box there? We purchased new equipment. Our old equipment was 17 years old, and it ran better than our old equipment, it reduced labor, and it was more transparent for our citizens. We also, we have done a number of outreach efforts to disabled community, and we were the first entity this year in the state, and one of only three and four in the country that did American Sign Language of our sample ballot for our citizens. So we continued to be innovative there, to reach out to people and make sure that they are fully enfranchised. A little bit, some of the operational indicators in our department, as you can see, every year we continue to do more and more. From first two on that table, documents recorded and processed, if you can see, from 2015 to last year, 16 to this year, and now projecting next year, we continue to grow and offer more and more services to our citizens. Register vehicles, we're going to be close to 700,000 vehicles next year. Driver's license, we continue to grow in that area. We look to be having nearly 130,000 visits next year. We are a growing county in population. Earlier this year, came to you, and we did precincting and redistricting, but we have grown so much since this summer as the number of registered voters that I'm going to need to come to you here in a couple of weeks, and we're going to have to add some more precincts. Won't change any districts, won't change any more districts, but by law, I cannot have precincts over 1,500. So I'm allowed to have them up to 2,000 with your authority, but we have a number of areas that are growing and have eclipsed that 2,000, or will do so here shortly. So I will be back before, in a couple of weeks, with that presentation. Registered voters, we're closely coming up to a half million people, and the number of jurisdictions, from special district, municipal districts, and the like, is many. Capital projects, we always want to get better and do more for our citizens. So I have two requests. With the passage of Proposition 108, it changes the course of primary elections. We will now be required to send out a Republican and Democrat ballot to all unaffiliated voters, and they then will return one of those two ballots. And I have to have the ability to process, and it's going to create some logistical issues for us to manage, because if they return both ballots voted, that is void. That, we cannot record those votes. So I have to be able to, before I open up that envelope, I have to be able to say whether that person returned a Republican or Democrat ballot, because I have to record that and score, and then I have to process that. So in order to do that, I can either do it with a lot of manual labor, or there is a ballot sorting machine that looks at the thickness of the ballot and can ascertain whether there's one or two ballots, and then can sort it because of a barcode. We'll have a hole in the ballot, a small little hole, that will show a barcode code as to whether the Democrat or Republican ballot is in there, and will get kicked out into an output bin so that we can process. So it takes a lot of logistics to process the new elections, and with that, I'm planning and investing some capital equipment to keep our labor costs low. And we also have challenges finding election judges. With the economic environment right now, there's a lot, we're near full employment, and it's hard to find people for a two-week period of time that will work elections. So I struggle to find labor to perform this, and also enough labor to be able to do this. So I'm seeking funds for that here this next year. We're growing as a county, and I'm required in a general election to have 24 VSPCs. Next year, I will be required to have 26. And in order to have enough equipment to do that, I need to acquire two more, four more ballot-on-demand printers. And rather than get brand-new ones, I found four that have less than 10,000 ballots that have been printed on them. Typically, these machines go for a half million dollars, so I'm paying about $11,000 for these machines versus $18,000. So I've got a real deal as far as ballot-on-demand printers. However, I have reserves to be able to pay for this, so I'm not asking you today for money. We have saved our penny, and we have been prudent, and we will be able to fund this ourselves. So kind of our challenges for the next year, as I mentioned earlier, the total number of vehicles we have continue to grow. With the state implementing their new drives program after 30 years, they're moving to a state-of-an-art application, and they want to install that this next summer. And the challenges I have, as I told you before the Board, is summertime is when we are the busiest, summertime is when my staff wants to go on vacation, but summertime is when the Hickenlooper administration wants to enact this new program. So I'm going to have 20% of my technicians out at some time during the summer months training, so I need to be able to staff up and be able to handle that. So I've got a couple plans on how I'm going to do that. So how am I going to handle that? The State Department of Motor Vehicles said when we present this as being a problem, because in June, we have a primary, and then we have all these other activities happening in the summer. They said, "Well, just educate your customers that you'll have to wait a little longer." Well, that's not acceptable to me. So we're going to increase our staffing with 18 part-time people to help with that training and that transition to that software, so that our citizens really don't see a difference in their service time. And like I said, we've been judicious with our spending. We have restricted funds for this. It'll cost us about $235,000, but we have the funds to be able to make this happen. And then we're also adding one full-time motor vehicle employee. Once again, I'm not asking for you to fund that. I'm going to take that out of my restricted funds. And what that will allow me to do is, when a customer buys a new vehicle from a dealership and they send us the paperwork, we complete that paperwork, and we send out a title-complete notice saying, "Hey, your paperwork is done. Come on in and complete your transaction, get your plate." But there's a provision in law that allows me to do that by phone, so rather than have our customers come in the office, they can call our phone bank after the first year, and this person will take their information, take their payment over the phone, and we'll be able to mail their plates to them, so they won't have to even come into our office. Our voter registration numbers continue to climb, as I mentioned before, and we're going to be buying election equipment, the ballot sorting equipment to handle that. I mentioned about the four ballot-on-demand printers and the sorting machine. Our office objectives and progress for the past year. Service motor vehicle customers within an average time of 20 minutes. We rose throughout the middle of this year. We were at about 25 minutes. We want to try and drive that down next year. Our dealer desk has been a situation where a lot of new car sales has contributed to a rise in our wait times, but we have started to turn that around and drive that back down. We've expanded our driver's license services in 2017. We continue to leverage best practice and technologies to offer services faster and cheaper to our citizens. As I mentioned earlier, we installed those motor vehicle registration renewals, and we have a 24/7 box. We saved our pennies to buy our election equipment that we utilize today to ensure faster and more transparent results. And we're purchasing a new agenda management system for the Clerk to the Board, and that'll be an asset that'll be able to be utilized by other boards and commissions in the county. Identify additional ways to serve those that are serving our military community. We served over 34,000 military-specific customers since the beginning of the year, and we do that with our special queues we have for military in each of our motor vehicle office and also the office at Fort Carson. We have a designated military liaison at each of our motor vehicle office to handle issues that are specific and unique to our servicemen and women. And then we participated this year at Fort Carson in the Military Retiree Appreciation Day that they had at Fort Carson. So I needed 13 people to man our office down there on Saturday, and I had so many people in our office that volunteered to work that day. I had turned some away. So that makes you feel very good, that we, as a community, love to support our military. And we continue to work to provide world-class customer service to our citizens. We receive almost daily comments from customers about their experience in our offices and how it far exceeds their expectations for governmental office, let alone a motor vehicle office. And our elections department continue to receive awards after awards for their great work. Here is our budget. It is identical to last year, except for, we used to fund one security person up at our Union Town Center, and the county has taken that over. So we are actually spending $40,000 or less because we're not utilizing that person. So last year, we had approved projects of 140,000. This year, with the ballot sorting machine and print-on-demand equipment, we look to be asking for your approval for $275,000, but there again, we have the money to do that. Late registration, we're rolling more money over. We didn't use all our late registration fees, so that will roll into next year. That will be up to $900,000. Under House bills, in 2007, 1115, we have clerk hire fees. We get to charge $4 for conducting transactions. We keep $2 of that, and the other $2 roll into the general fund coffers, and that's our fund balance there. And we utilize all those funds for the additional staffing and our equipment needs for our operations. Any questions? Questions? Commissioner Waller?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I have some questions about the unaffiliated ballots that are going to go out, and process-wise, how all that's going to end up working? This has been an area of concern, I think, for me and a lot of folks. First of all, if you get both ballots back, is that just an automatic rejection? Do you give them an opportunity to cure? What's that process look like?
If they return both ballots back, so if they've voted one and not the other, we will count that. But if they take both ballots and they vote that, then that will be rejected.
And are you going to send notice out to those folks to give them an opportunity to cure, or will it just show, you know, as Commissioner Littleton has said, she wants to have a button on there where you can go check to see if your ballot counted? I mean, is it just going to show that you didn't vote? I mean, how's that, what's that look like?
Well, if they return both ballots and they voted both ballots, then that will come up as being rejected. If they send one ballot back, fill it out in the other one, then we'll accept that one. If they send, are you asking if they send both ballots back unvoted?
No, I'm saying if they send both ballots back and they're both voted, are you going to reach out to them to cure the problem at some point? Or are you just going to reject the ballots and not tell them that their ballots have been rejected?
Good point. I don't know. I'll address that with the Secretary of State's office if they want a method for curing that. As I know, in state statute, that doesn't exist at this point.
And I got to imagine, if that ends up being the policy or the process, that that's kind of an expensive proposition to reach out. Because I, you know, it seems to me, this is new in the state of Colorado, and, you know, a lot of people are going to get both of these ballots in the mail, and they're just going to vote them without sort of thinking about it. They're just going to vote and send it back in, think everything's good, and then all of a sudden, it's not.
Well, Commissioner Waller, there will be instructions in their packet that they are to vote only one and return only one. So there will be additional information with that to clarify that. But, you know, I will address that with the Secretary of State about how, you know, is there going to be a provision for people to cure that?
Thank you. It's just, you know, one of the frustrations of this, what I believe is somewhat of an irresponsible program.
Okay. Commissioner Fenner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Maybe to follow on to Commissioner Waller's point, some of that also, and you can maybe correct me if I'm inaccurate with this, it sounds like an unfunded mandate from the state. We have to pay these bills in order to comply with this legislation again, right? Seems to happen a lot. That's kind of a comment to that. But I actually do have some questions on page 16, the restricted general fund numbers. It's just kind of a point of clarification, if you would. So these are budget requirements, and by the way, thank you for being frugal with the dollars, so that you don't actually have to make general fund requests to the county. But with regard to these, like the late registration, it sounded to me like you're carrying over unexpended funds. So is the $900,000 your expected expenditures, or is that actually a reserve figure?
Reserve.
That's a reserve figure. Okay. And then the line before that, that $275,000, is that a reserve figure, or is that an expected expenditure?
That's an expected expenditure.
Okay. And then the fees, is that an expenditure or a reserve?
Reserve.
That's reserve. Okay, so two of those are reserve, and one of those is expenditure?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank our Clerk and Recorder for all the hard work he's been doing. One of the things, and somebody mentioned a comment earlier about reserves, but what I've seen through your office is that you guys build up a little bit of reserves, but then utilize that money without having to come back to us to pay for vital equipment and capital. Could you give an example, like the voting equipment that we paid for this year, based on that effort, and other departments do that?
Yes. The cost of our voting equipment was approximately $900,000, was $880,000. And we, like I said, we've been saving our pennies over the years because we knew someday we were going to have to replace that, and we're able to do that because we have been judicious with our money, and we didn't have to come to you asking for that, that we had them funds to be able to do. You just need to give review, and we consult with you and get your approval for that expenditure.
And I did want to highlight that, because I have seen that in a couple of departments, where you do allow that reserves to build up a little bit, but then it is being utilized, and we are using this money to the benefits of our taxpayers in a smart way. Thank you.
We do. We do. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Great, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Since we're about an hour and a half ahead of schedule, we do believe that we could have all this afternoon's presenters here, assuming we continue on a similar pace as what we have been. And with that, we could probably break, have everything completed and break for lunch around 12:30, if that is amenable to everybody.
It's a great goal.
So we'll try to stay on that target. Thank you.
Yeah, don't fumble.
That hurts. Good morning, President. Good morning, Commissioners. Craig Dossie, Executive Director of Planning and Community Development. I had a deal with Chuck that he would make the bar really low for me. I'm not sure we accomplished that, so I may have a problem with Chuck moving forward, but we'll see if we can go for it anyway. I realize, in seeing all the other presentations, that mine might, my organizational chart might be the one that people can read. I'm not sure what that says, but I think you can read it. There's myself as Director.
I think the smaller the org chart, the smaller the budget. That's how that should work.
That's how that should work.
The text is really big. I don't know. You have myself, I have a deputy director, Mark Gebhardt, and then we have basically four divisions within the department. I think most of you are very familiar with at least three of them. As you saw with Ramir up here, we have the planning division. They're also known as project managers. We have five project managers now. They take a lot of the over-the-counter type calls, somebody that has an idea that they want to subdivide or rezone, all the way up to your major development applications. You saw Ramir this morning with special districts, 1041 applications, those kind of things. The next division is our code enforcement division. We have a code enforcement supervisor, which was a change from how we've kind of historically done it. That was something that was created since I took over as director. We have underneath that supervisor, we have two, currently two code enforcement officers. We're hoping to expand that staff by one FTE moving forward. I've shown you stats in the past of the increase in complaints that our code enforcement division has received over the last three years, continues to grow, and so we're needing that additional staff member, but I will not be asking you specifically to fund that. So I guess that's the good news. The next division is our engineering group. We have an engineering group manager who we hired from the city of Color Springs, I'm happy to say. I think that was a good addition to our staff. Within that, we have three reviewing engineers as well as our inspection staff, which is made up of our inspection supervisor and three inspectors. That number used to be two inspectors. If you recall, we added an additional inspector in order to follow through on our promise with the industry and the agreement that we made with them in inspecting sidewalks prior to the county accepting those to make sure that the quality of the sidewalk that we took in was such that we weren't going to be replacing that in the near future. So that's why we added that one inspector. And then lastly, what most of you probably don't see is our admin staff, which is made up of a supervisor, six full-time employees, and one part-time. You know, they really kind of keep us all from messing up more than we already do. They are really the glue that holds us all together. In terms of operations, I'll go through this briefly. I know there's a lot of words on there. Planning staff, one of which I guess I came from, they look at, they review land development applications for consistency with the master plan, which, if you recall, we're going through the process of drafting a water master plan. That's one of the elements. The other ones that you see are the policy plan, the black forest plan, all the other small area plans. They look at applications for compliance with the Land Development Code. They also look at compliance with state statute. You saw a good example of that this morning in the special district application. Their role is really to manage the project from start to finish, and that includes from initial discussions with the applicant all the way until the project's constructed. They oversee all of those procedures. They also prepare the staff report in conjunction with the engineering staff that's assigned to the project, and, you know, they really are kind of the ones that are moving things through the process. The engineering group, they look at, they review the same development applications typically in order to ensure that the minimum standards in state statute or federal law or county standards are met. They also, and this has really kind of become a very critical role for them, they also make sure that development is occurring in compliance with the county's MS4 permit. If you recall, we've had some discussions, some appeals that have come to you regarding our MS4 permit. It's very important that our engineering group do that review initially and that our inspections group carry that forward in order to protect the county from potential lawsuit. Our engineering groups works very closely with county engineer, not only maintaining our records, but also coming to decisions on issues regarding development, whether it be drainage or traffic. Our engineering staff is sort of treated like an outside agency in terms of referrals because, again, the project managers are the ones running the project, but they do help draft those staff reports. Our inspection staff, as I said, they work out in the field. Those are the guys that are doing the heavy lifting. They're out there, whether it's, they're like the U.S. Post Office. If it's raining, if it's cold, if it's windy, they're out there doing inspections. A lot of times, those inspections have to occur at very inconvenient times. Sometimes those are on the weekends. Sometimes those are on days where they might otherwise be off, and we have a great staff that's willing to step up and do that in order to keep construction out in the real world moving forward. They also inspect driveways slash access permits to make sure that where those accesses are at are safe, that we're not creating a safety hazard. They are the ones doing the inspections along with Jim's group at Department of Public Works to make sure that we are, again, in conformance with our MS4 permit. So the engineers are doing the review to make sure that the design is there, but then our inspection staff is making sure that whatever that design is, is actually getting implemented. That is not a minor role in their process, and that's really something that we've tried to improve upon over the course of the last two or three years. On your agendas, oftentimes you'll see items that are for acceptance of certain public improvements as well as releases of collateral that are tied to those improvements. Our staff, our inspection staff coordinates that in order of getting it on the agenda and then processing those releases. Our code enforcement staff, again, they've taken on a very heavy workload here in the last couple of years. I don't really know what to attribute the influx of complaints to, but it seems to be becoming more of an issue rather than less of an issue. As you know, I think I've received emails, probably from all of you at some point, regarding code enforcement issues in your respective districts, and they're very responsive to get out, take a look at that and verify whether or not we actually have an issue or if we just need to have a conversation with the property owner. They enforce the county's rubbish and weed ordinances. Those are the two main ones. Recently, if you recall, we have a line item in our budget for cleanup that's initiated by the county rather than waiting to go through the entire legal process to recover the funds from a sale as a result of a lien and then clean up the property. We have a line item in our budget where we can go out, clean up the property, and then put a lien on the property to recover those funds. I'm happy to report that's been very successful. We will exhaust that fund for this year. If you recall, one of the projects that we contributed to, because there wasn't enough funds in our line item, but the one over in Park Vista with all the construction trailers, that's an example of the types of efforts that we go through to try to abate some of these properties. With that, there's a very close relationship with the county attorney's office. Obviously, nothing happens unless we go to court and we get those entry warrants. So our code enforcement staff works very closely with Amy's group, and I think that relationship has certainly blossomed into something that's very positive, especially having the resources to go out and clean up some of these properties. Lastly, the admin staff, again, they kind of support all the other functions that we have. They do the over-the-counter development applications. Those are the ones you all don't see. These aren't the rezonings. These aren't the subdivisions. These are, I want to do a deck, I want to do a single-family home, I want to do a driveway permit. They're the ones that are processing those at the front counter. So they're kind of the unsung heroes that carry a very heavy workload. They also support two boards. You all appoint members to these boards, those being the planning commission, the Board of Adjustment. Those are monthly meetings. In the case of the planning commission, we typically have two per month. So there's a lot of work and time spent in getting those agendas ready and creating the minutes for those meetings. I'm not going to go through all these state statutes. I know that would be boring. It might even be boring for me. But what I will say is, what we do has very deep roots in state statute. As you're all aware, there are certain mandates of the county, being a statutory county rather than a home rule county, that have their basis in state statute. One of the areas that you all don't see a lot, but certainly we take, we took our cue from you on or a prior board, is our 1041 regulations. Those were enabling, that was enabling legislation that the board never did adopt regulations for until very recently. We are the, I guess you'd call that the house that runs that. Any 1041 application that comes into the county is processed through my office. Those are sometimes very time-consuming, but again, you know, our staff is able to keep up with that workload. Our code enforcement officers, there's, I think there's actually three Board of County Commissioners ordinances pertaining to their authorities in terms of enforcement, but we also take our cues from Title 30 in the state statutes. With regard to strategic plan goals, I believe we have two that really correspond with our department. The first is to encourage the growth of existing businesses and recruitment of new businesses, and within that, kind of a subset of that is evaluating our regulations and our procedures on an ongoing basis. Those of you that have been on the board for a while know that you'll kind of routinely see us bring land development code amendments for various purposes. To you, I'm happy to report, we've continued to do that. In 2016, we had a pretty long list, my favorite being ag retainment. I think that just makes everybody smile when you hear that word. And then again, this year, you will be seeing the tiny house regulations coming to the Board of County Commissioners. Originally, it was supposed to be November 28th, but I found out you don't have a meeting that day, so we're bumping that to December 12th. A couple of other ones, we're calling it kind of a cleanup effort that'll address issues that we deal with. It may not be something that you all see in one of these major development applications, but they're, as a result of phone calls that we get, you know, beekeeping, allowing manufactured homes and mobile home parks, ADA compliance, agricultural setbacks, these are just examples of things that we deal with that you don't necessarily see. We also have six more, I'll call them phases of code amendments, that we plan on bringing to you over the course of the next, I'd guess, six months. And again, you know, it's incumbent upon us to respond to market demands, and in doing that, we work with the citizens and we work with the industry to make sure the direction that we think we need to head in and that we recommend to you is in keeping with what they want to see. The next strategic plan goal was with regard to partnering with some of the local municipalities to see where can we have, where we overlap and maybe where can we create some consistency between our regulations and theirs. Obviously, being a statutory county, a lot of our municipalities are home rule. Therein lies some challenges. It doesn't mean it's not possible, but there are certainly challenges there. They have a lot more flexibility in terms of the regulatory scheme for land use than we do. However, we have already begun approaching those municipalities, particularly with regard to procedures. You're all very familiar with our EDARP program. We did a demo for all of the municipalities to try to get hopefully everybody on the same program. I don't know if we'll make any ground in that area. What I do know is I think they were all very appreciative of the work that we've done, and hopefully there's an opportunity to partner with some of those municipalities. Future steps, we'll be sitting down with some of those municipalities to see what ground can be gained. You know, obviously, that's going to be subject to how welcoming they are to the idea. Last time I checked, I can't force the other planning directors to agree to anything, so, and justifiably so. And so we'll feel that out over the course of 2018. I mentioned the different types of development applications. Year-over-year comparisons, our type As and type Bs, we're basically right where we were last year. And if you recall, last year was really our main uptick from where we were in the recession. That's where we really kind of felt like we were coming out of the recession. Our type Cs and type Ds, again, are right there as well. And I'm going to show you a slide in a second that really explains what I think our staff has, or our staff was during the recession, where we are now versus the workload. I am projecting that we'll be around 380 major development applications. These are the ones that you actually see on your agenda. That is right where we were, you know, 2014, 2015, 2016. You can see at the, I call it the valley or the bottom of the recession, we were below 200 applications. We have, I would say significantly rebounded. What you saw in the last, I'd say, four years was an inventory of those platted lots being consumed by the market, and now we're at a point where new developments coming out of the ground. We're seeing more major development applications because that inventory's not there anymore. So I don't think we'll see a slowdown in that at all. Finance asked that I put a slide in for capital projects. As you are all aware, we don't project manage any capital projects. What we do project manage is the development of public improvements that get dedicated to the county. I would venture to guess that the majority of new roads in the county come into the county for ownership and long-term maintenance as a result of the development process, not as capital improvement projects that the county's taking on to extend roads. So we do relate with Jim's group very closely. One of the ways is oftentimes, we need to coordinate with them because they're doing their own improvements, let's say, half a mile down the road, and it will impact the traffic at the intersection of where the development's occurring. Some, a good example, we had one on Struthers at North Gate where the county was planning to put it in a roundabout, and we had a development right at that intersection. It's very important that we coordinate not just the traffic improvements, the transportation improvements, but also the drainage improvements that go with that. So while we don't run them, certainly we're very involved in some of the ones that Jim's group's running. Some of the budgetary highlights, I know I've probably spoken exhaustively about EDARP. What I don't want misunderstood is the cost savings as a result of EDARP aren't significant on the county side. There are some soft cost savings, don't get me wrong, in terms of staff time, but where you're seeing the most savings is on the developer's side or the landowner's side because the printing cost is not there anymore. A lot of the staff time to get hard copies actually delivered to us is not there anymore. We've alleviated all of that. And I have an estimate about what that costs per development application. Your average development application exceeds about $2,000 per development application. That doesn't sound like a lot, but when you multiply that times 400, it becomes pretty significant. We're also looking to expand EDARP so that all of the services that we offer, all of the application review services we offer can be accomplished electronically. That means your driveway permits, your single-family homes, your decks, all of that stuff can be done electronically. That's what we have planned for this year, and I think we'll achieve that. If you recall, a couple of months ago, or maybe a month ago, we took, we brought a couple of agenda items to you that we worked on in collaboration with Regional Building. Again, Regional Building was the entity that developed our EDARP program. We're basically leasing the program from them. They did it at no charge. That is, that is not, I mean, I can't understate how important that was. If we would have bought something off the shelf, it would have been at a much more significant cost to the county. So the savings that we were able to achieve in working with them in that collaborative format really, you know, eventually we'll get to pass on, and we already have passed on, the form of the reduced cost of printing to the industry. We also implemented our passageways program, which is our electronic agenda management program with the planning commission and Board of Adjustment. There was very little, this says without increasing costs. It's really hard to measure that because there's staff time involved in preparing some of the massive packets that we end up with. But I can pretty confidently say it didn't increase costs and it provided a lot more efficiency, not only for the outside world to look at our agendas and get a copy of those rather than having to get a hard copy, they can get it online, but also our planning commission themselves, they can review all that material from the comfort of a lawn chair in Hawaii if they want to. So that really, I think, helped in how we interact with our planning commission and our Board of Adjustment. As I mentioned, the sidewalk inspections, we're very closely with the HBA to develop a program that worked for everybody. I honestly believe this was ground that we found somewhere in the middle. If you recall, this has been about a 30- to 40-year problem for the county and for the industry. We did add an FTE for that additional sidewalk inspector, but what I think, the way that I think we're saving money for the county is we're not having to go back and repair those sidewalks that maybe historically we were taking in that were damaged because we're catching that before we take those improvements on. And I think in the long run, that's going to save the county a lot of money. As I mentioned earlier, we also have the dedicated code enforcement cleanup fund. As I said, we will exhaust that for this year, and we already have many on the list for next year, so we're looking to utilize that fund again next year. Our base budget is just over 2.1 million. Our revenues to date, we are actually exceeding projected by 270,000, and it'll get to my next slide when I say we're busier than we were in the recession and we, but we have the same staffing, you're going to see exactly what I mean. This is indicative, this number is indicative of how busy we are. So as I alluded to in a couple of other slides, prior to the recession, I kind of qualify that as years 2007, 2008, we were in the neighborhood of three, really feel like 2007, it was about 400 projects. These are the major development applications that you all see on your agenda. At that time, we had a staffing level of 34 employees. And of note was seven engineers. During the recession, obviously, we had to reduce staffing. The project numbers went down, and this kind of gives you an idea that what we're talking about here is our operations are very dependent upon the market. I think there are some that, some... I think there are some that, some departments and functions of the county that, you know, it kind of is what it is and that function's always there every year. I don't feel like we're that way. When things are going good out in the real world, we're busy. When things are slow, we're not as busy. And so what you saw during the recession is a staffing level of 24 and 23. Those are really kind of, again, the valley of the recession. As we came out of the recession, in terms of the development activity, we got back up into three and even nearing the 400-project count mark. However, our staffing did not come back up. We added two full-time employees in 2017. One of those was converting a part-time to a full-time, that was an admin person. The other one was adding the sidewalk inspector. Right now, we have three engineers, whereas prior to the recession, we had seven. We are going to be able to get another engineer through some consolidation with the admin budget, happy to report. But the point to take from this is we're doing more with less. Each staff member is carrying a heavier project load than they have historically, certainly in my time with county, I started in 2008. So you should be very proud of your staff. Again, while EDARP does create a lot of efficiency in processing, the time that it takes to review a plan remains the same. That won't change because you've got to put eyes on a plan, whether it's on paper or on a screen. So I do think that if we maintain the trajectory that we're at in terms of development activity, there may be the need to add another engineer in the future. I think we're good with where we're at for the near term, but certainly, you know, again, I feel like we need to respond to the market. I think we've done that and we've really kind of maintained, kind of held our own, given the staffing we had. But if things don't slow down, then we'll have to look at that option.
With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Lilton?
Thank you. I think, Craig, at some point in time, correct me, I think it was Sketch or something like that, that we were implementing over at Regional Building and also within our building department. So when they went out, our inspectors went out to go look at sites, they could actually take pictures, it would upload to the site so that we had documentation of what was done. We could be very specific about what builders still needed to get done rather than just being vague or having one inspector say, you know, so many times, I think, people in the past, a long time ago, before you were here, felt that there was a gotcha game, right? It's like, one inspector says you have to do this, another inspector says that you have to do that, so that we're consistent in all of our messaging. Is that true?
Well, I'm not going to say it was true on the gotcha part, but that was my suspicion as well and take my position. The program that you're talking about is going to be under item two here, expansion of EDARP. We are going to be working with the programmer over at Regional Building to create an expanded module in EDARP that is a co-inspection process with Jim's group. Therefore, when we send a list of what's called a punch list to developers of things that are broken or that aren't done or need to be fixed or whatever the case may be, it's one list. We're hoping that that's going to be GPS-based so they'll know exactly where it is, it'll have pictures inserted in that. What we're trying to do is really streamline not only the inspection process, but also their ability to get out there and make those repairs so that they're not hunting around the site trying to figure out what needs to be repaired. So that's one of the modules that's part of the expansion. The other one is code enforcement. And that's going to have a lot of the same attributes that the inspection one that I described. Obviously, the bigger one there is being able to take those photos, date and timestamp those because ultimately, whatever we do on our end, we have to hand over to Amy's group and make sure that it's defensible so that we can go through that enforcement process with the court. So those are the two things we're going to be working on this year. I think certainly the relationship with our inspectors and the Public Works inspectors is very good right now. But if we can create additional time savings by providing them with devices out in the field to get the information back to the development community so they can begin taking care of their business, so they can get out of the site and they can start selling lots, I think that's incumbent upon us to do that.
Well, and hopefully, it's not going to be a lot of expense to do that because I know when Bob Croft was over at Regional Building, we were already looking at this and we were already going out because on Sketch, it's a program you can download for free, it's an app, right? And you can actually even use your iPad to draw circles around what it is, put arrows, write down what it is needs to be done. And so it becomes very specific. So I hope that we're not going to expend funds on this, that we'll utilize tools that are currently out there and help them co-mingle together.
And I guess that's really kind of the beautiful part of the relationship with Regional Building is the group that designed that, implemented that program with Regional Building is the very same group that's working on our program. So certainly, there's not only time savings, but as a result of that, cost savings to the county. One of the things I wanted to point out with regard to EDARP that I guess I missed when I went through the slide is you can't implement a program like that unless you upgrade the technology that you're dealing with. That includes monitors, that includes additional monitors in our conference rooms, that's faster computers because we're reviewing everything electronically. Some of these plan sets in digital format are very, very large. We were able to pay for all of those improvements through one-time department savings as a result of some personnel savings. So we did, I did not come to you and ask you for additional funds for that. That was something that we were able to accomplish in-house and I'm very proud that we were able to do that with the money that we had.
And then just one last comment, just for my colleagues who weren't here during some of the last budget cycle in the past, but I know that Commissioner Glenn and I have worked very hard in the past with other board members to ensure that we have barriers to business removed, that we're not out there playing gotcha, that we're not changing the game rules, that there are very specific things that we, you know, checklists that we ask people to do so that we don't have people that are on staff, engineers, seven to three, who are literally just doing things for job security that we're really, hopefully, streamlining, making sure that we do what we have to do in a very robust and efficient way.
Commissioner Venter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Craig, and appreciate everything that you're doing, you know, EDARP and everything else about improving services and so forth. But since this is a presentation about 2018 budget, I see in Chart 12, you know, your OAB for 2017, but I don't actually see what the numbers are for 2018 in the charts. Is it the same number?
We are not proposing a change to that number. Obviously, it's going to depend on the funding for those two additional positions, so that will go up and I don't know exactly what that dollar amount is. I'd have to defer to Nicholas' group for that.
Yeah, I just don't see in the charts, you know, kind of like a side-by-side 2017-2018 comparison or anything like that. I just didn't see it.
And I can tell you, none of the services are, we're not adding additional services, so the budget should stay the same with the exception of those two positions, but I guess I will defer to them to confirm that for sure.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, why don't we take a 10-minute break? We'll stand in recess. Okay, we are back on the record.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Amy Folsom, County Attorney. I've got a brief presentation for you. I've had the privilege of sitting through everyone with you, so I'll try to be merciful.
No, I do want to interrupt one thing. Where's Klafke?
I know, it was suggested that I have Steve in here to provide a little...
You know, there better not be a raise for him in this deal at all, so...
I didn't see any.
He better be listening.
I hope he is too. I hope he is too. So Commissioners, like many other departments, the Office of the County Attorney is not asking for any increase to our general fund budget. I can tell you, we have in the past, in past years, come to you and said we've got budget deficits that impact our ability to do our job. That is not the case this year, so you will not be hearing that from me this morning. So I'll spend a little bit of time telling you a little bit about what we do. I know many of you know exactly what our folks on the civil side do because you see us all the time, okay? So I think I get the award for the simplest org chart. I think I beat Mr. Dossie. I am the appointed county attorney. Diana May is our first assistant county attorney.
Although, aren't you responsible for the DA's incredibly complicated org chart?
I did. I am, I am. I did prepare that. I think it was in 2005, not quite as complicated then, but I actually did prepare that. So on the civil side, we have six additional attorneys in addition to Diana and myself that perform all the civil work for the county and five support staff. They are an extraordinary group. What a lot of folks don't know is that the County Attorney's Office is actually made up of two very different divisions that have fundamentally different missions. So the largest part of our office is actually our County Attorney DHS Division, made up of nine attorneys currently. We have recently received funding from the Department of Human Services to increase that number to 11 attorneys, so we're very excited about that, and 15 support staff. What you also need to know is that we're funded entirely differently. Our CAT Civil Division is funded from general fund budget numbers and our DHS Division is actually funded via a contract with our Department of Human Services. There is an existing contract whereby we agree to perform legal services and they give us money in return. So a little bit about our operations. Obviously, we do represent the interests of the Board of County Commissioners, all your advisory boards. We represent the interests of other elected and appointed officials. We defend the county from all liability actions. And we also represent the county, its departments, and other elected officials in all sorts of civil matters. Again, our Human Services Division provides legal advice to the Department of Human Services, okay? So there are pre-litigation types of services that our attorneys perform. We have two attorneys that are on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for the department to call us and help us pre-litigate, help them pre-litigation. We represent them in dependency and neglect cases, we take custody of children when circumstances so dictate, and we represent the Department of Human Services to even terminate parental rights when things get that far. What a lot of folks also don't know is that we provide representation in mental health commitment proceedings, we staff a drug court, and we provide also ongoing training to the department to assist them to meet their mission. Our statutory mandates are pretty simple. What I did not know is that the Colorado Constitution does provide that the county attorney can be elected. That was new information. I'm not aware of any county in the state of Colorado that elects their county attorney. I think most of them are appointed.
Would you like to do that?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to do that?
I would not like to do that. No. No. Our Human Services Division, our Children's Code is found in Title 19, our Guardianships and Conservative ships are found in Title 15, and the Mental Health Services that the County Attorney's Office is responsible for supporting is found in CRS Title 27. So the Budget Department asked us to indicate how it is the County Attorney's Office supports the county's overall strategic plan. And I think I can say with a relatively straight face that the County Attorney's Office is responsible for supporting all, or nearly all, of the missions of this organization. I like to think of the County Attorney's Office as kind of a little cog to which a lot of big cogs are attached, right? So it's really important for your County Attorney's Office to be operating efficiently, to be operating effectively. So a few of our operating indicators. We are not an office that keeps track of billable hours, so that's a good thing for public servants. So sometimes, it's a little bit hard to identify with numbers what it is your County Attorney's Office does. So I'll talk a little bit about our Civil Litigation Division where we do have some numbers that can give you an idea of what's been happening. So our litigation cases, in 2017, we had 27 new cases filed against the county. I have taken a look at those cases, Commissioners. I'm not seeing any significant trends, anything that, where we can identify where there's significant risk, something we need to ameliorate in the county. I'd hate to simply say it's a cost of doing business, but I think we all know from recent events that it's kind of the lawsuit du jour to sue the county. So we've been anticipating this in recent years. In 2016, we only had 17 new cases filed, but again, I can't see any significant reason or risk why that's the case. One great statistic, since 2015, we've had 64 lawsuits filed and 37 of those have been closed, 32 by outright dismissal. So that's really a testament to what your litigation team is able to do. The most dangerous time to settle a case is after litigation has been filed. So what I think these numbers really show is that our litigation team is actively working to get them dismissed. In 2017, we have 50 notice of claims to date. That is not a significant number. There is no significant uptick from recent years. Our settlements to date are also trending with prior years. I need to add one settlement that came in just last week. So we're at about $106,000 in settlements from the County Attorney's Office. Now, the County Attorney's Office does not have a risk management section per se, but I put this slide in here to try to highlight for you the efforts that your County Attorney's Office does go through to try to manage the risk of the county proactively instead of reactively. I do have the attorneys triaging and managing cases from events all the way through lawsuit. We have enhanced coordination between risk management and the County Attorney's Office, even in low-level claims. We are actively and on a daily basis educating elected officials and hiring departments about where there is risk and how to proactively mitigate it. Employment, or excuse me, operating indicators for our Employment Division. We are now, and this has not always been the case, updating our employment manual on a yearly basis. Laws are changing. It's important for us to keep up to speed with them and so we are managing that task. One new thing is that we're conducting Title VII investigations for the Sheriff's Office. This has not been the case in past years. Title VII investigations, as you may know, are our highest-risk type of events that can happen in the county. These are alleged discrimination based on race, gender, sexual orientation, religion. Historically, those have been held in the Sheriff's Office, but in 2017, with additional help and funding from the Sheriff's Office, your County Attorney's Office is now handling those investigations. And I think that's a great thing. It ensures more confidentiality, both for the claimant and for the person against whom the claim is made, and ensures more neutrality, some separation from the organization itself. We've streamlined due process for all employees. That just means when an employee makes a grievance or there's some sort of issue that an employee brings to our attention, we're managing that very quickly and efficiently. We've had five EEOC cases filed against us in 2017, very consistent with prior years. We're seeing no real uptick. One additional thing we've done in 2017 is we created and conducted for the first time harassment training for the Sheriff's Office. It's not that they hadn't been receiving it, but certainly, they hadn't been receiving it in the most consistent manner. So the County Attorney's Office did create that and using in-house staff, we did implement that throughout the APSO. So in 2018, we've been asked to conduct all of their supervisor training in-house. They want to save money, not have to go to outside consultants. We have the expertise in-house to do it, so we're prepared to do that. And we're also gearing up in 2018 to do the same thing for all county departments. Civil Division, land use, lots of great things happening. I think you just heard kind of Craig's description of how the land use applications have ebbed and flowed over the years and certainly, the County Attorney's Office has been instrumental in kind of helping those through the process. We do provide, because I think it's important, onsite attorney legal help to every division that we can, and the Planning Division is no exception. Lori Seago spends Mondays and Wednesdays actually onsite at the Planning Department and so we assist with getting the legal issues wrapped up so we don't have to deal with them on the dais. Additionally, we've had, I think you know, we've had significant code enforcement cases taken care of, we're involved in the new water master plan, and we've had some great real estate transactions that have occurred as well. Sheriff's Office, this is also our third year with an attorney onsite at the Sheriff's Office. Many of you may know that was not always the case, that prior to the current sheriff taking his seat, that the sheriff himself hired his own legal counsel. That's obviously fraught with dangers when you're not getting consistent legal advice across all county departments. Again, we've got the new Title VII investigatory process to ensure neutrality, enhanced legal support with an onsite paralegal that was actually funded by the Sheriff's Office, so that was not as a result of an additional funding request. And again, we're going to be conducting supervisory training and we are also a significant presence already at their training academies. So Human Services Division, I can tell you that the folks that are handling the dependency and neglect cases and the probate mental... probate mental health and all the drug cases, I think they are singularly some of the most unsung heroes in the county. They have the highest caseload of any Department of Human Services attorneys in the state. Their caseload is higher than ever this year. We've got 922 open dependency and neglect cases. So these are cases where folks, where kids and families are not doing well, where children are being abused or neglected, and folks have not availed themselves of the services of the Department of Human Services. So it's necessary for us to get the court involved. And that's where your Department of Human Services attorneys come in. File the litigation, force, by court order, for lack of a better word, folks to avail themselves of their services and hopefully get themselves out of the system. But where folks don't do that, again, they step in, assist DHS with taking custody of children, and if necessary, again, terminate parental rights. By comparison, our next county with a large caseload, I believe is Adams County, and they've got 600 cases. Rappahoe County, 500, and Jefferson County, 570. So you can see, and I'm sure you'll hear from Julie on Thursday, how significant this problem is in our community. And I just want to publicly commend the efforts of the attorneys on that division. They are dedicated public servants. They are slug-in dockets four days a week. And they often do it without a lot of places within which to find victory, right? If you're preventing abuse, if you're putting families back together effectively, it's hard to really tabulate, you know, what the impact that you've had. But it's undoubtedly real, and I have a lot of respect for them doing what they do. Again, thanks to great cooperation with Julie Crowe and her department. We are able to expand that unit by a couple of attorneys and a staff member this next year, and we're very excited about that. We also handle our own appeals. We had 14 in 2016 and 23 year-to-date today. We also had a recent great argument by one of our new attorneys, Jordan Lewis, at the Colorado Court of Appeals just a couple of weeks ago. That doesn't always, that doesn't happen very often where an attorney gets to argue with the Court of Appeals, but we're excited and he did a great job. So Civil Division, General Fund breakdown. This slide simply highlights, like many departments, we are as good as our people are. We are overwhelmingly people. You have an extraordinary group of people, both on the civil side and on the DHS side. And we're thankful for them. And I know many other departments have said, encourage you to invest in your human capital. I certainly do that as well. So high-level goals for the County Attorney's Office. We do do strategic planning internally. This is consistently one of our goals, to maintain and improve client relationships and service. We are only as effective as your confidence in us. So it's important to have those personal relationships and make sure, again, that you not only trust our legal acumen and our ability to provide you that legal advice, but also trust us as individuals. We take a very clear team approach. My goal is that anyone who needs legal services can get it on the spot, whether it's in person or on the phone. We have people effectively cross-trained. Hire, train, and retain the best. That is always a goal for certainly a professional department such as the County Attorney's Office. I am happy to report that I was appointed county attorney in 2012. We have had no turnover on the civil side, which I think is great. And I don't think that's a testament to me so much as to the dedication of the individuals who are there. So the 2018 focus for attorney attrition is certainly on the DHS side. We do lose folks over there. It's a difficult topic. It's a difficult job. And like many of the DAs, they just don't get paid that much. And finally, I think our focus needs to continue on becoming the most proactive attorney's office that we can, not just reacting to events and mitigating the liability after they happen, but to be in the departments, interfacing with individuals, identifying risks going forward. Questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Gonzalez?
Thank you. Could you go back one slide? So we talked about human capital, and you said that the DHS attorneys are funded separately that are restricted fund. So if we were to do whatever, 2% or 3% increase for human capital, does that then affect the civil attorneys raises? And does that come out of our general fund, or does that also come out of the restricted funds?
It does. It is applied to both the civil and the DHS attorneys, and I'll let Nicola address where it comes from.
Certainly, Commissioners. So the civil attorneys will be 100% part of the general fund, and that will be part of the list that'll be proposed. What we do for the DHS, and this is an excellent question for when Ms. Crowe presents as well, is we match roughly 20% of that funding. So as part of the projection that we build into the general fund cost will be 20% of what we anticipate to be that full cost, and then the remainder of it, we ensure is available through the allocation from the state and feds from that specific line item.
Do you have questions? Commissioner Wilton?
That's not a question. It's just a comment. You know, having been here before you were here, and then having brought you on board, I just want to really commend you. While you don't want to take any credit for having no turnover in the County Attorney's Office for the last five years, I think that you can. You've made it a very pleasant work experience. You've set good expectations and goals and let people know what they're accountable for and always support them in that. And I just can't thank you enough. You do a great job, Amy.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I do appreciate that. And one other comment. Of the eight attorneys that practice the civil work, six of us have greater than, seven of us have greater than 15 years in experience in government work. So I just want to commend the institutional knowledge that you have. And the only one who doesn't is Klafke. So, but we're getting in there. He's hit his five-year mark, so he's certainly carrying a full complement of cases as well.
He's not here. Just a point of clarification, going back to your D and N caseload. Are you looking at trying to beef that up, or whether it's through your office or through the Department of Human Services, when you're looking at your caseload compared to across the other, the front-range counties? Are you content with the staff you have, or is that something that you're looking at as a potential critical need?
We were not content with the nine. So we did sit down with Julie and make our pitch to her. And certainly, since she's come on board, she has more ideas of what she would like the County Attorney's Office to do. So it was as a result of those conversations that now for 2018, through the DHS contract, we have two new attorneys coming on board, which will significantly ameliorate the caseload issues as well as another support staff.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? Commissioner Vanderworth?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's just kind of a generic question. You know, we have the state DHS as well. And I have to imagine that a lot of these cases over on the DHS side have a lot of similarities in them. So does the state have legal staff that can help counties? Because perhaps there's been a lot of similarities, you know, in that case workload that can be used, I don't know, possibly for training, or maybe, you know, an occasional utilization of a state-level legal counsel that comes to the counties and helps with those kinds of things. I'm just asking that question if that happens or not.
To my knowledge, Commissioner, no. It certainly doesn't happen here, and to my knowledge, it doesn't happen anywhere else either. Because of the way the DHS is organized, the caseworkers and employees of DHS are county employees. So therefore, we would be statutorily required to represent them. But there's lots of coordination between county attorney's offices all over the state as well. I mean, we have that asset available to us as well.
Okay, thanks. Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sherry Cassidy, County Controller. And I'm presenting today on the Administration and Financial Services Department. And we have several divisions within our department.
Just a point of clarification. So are you jumping ahead of IT?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just so they know. I'm looking at them. I'm looking at the calendar, and I'm like, okay.
Yeah, we were trying to shift around, so then we were going to go, it'll be, we'll do my department, and then we'll do IT, and then finish up with retirement.
I think you're going to get your email account frozen as a result of moving ahead of IT. All right. Proceed.
Okay, so we have several divisions within our department. We have Finance and Budget, Contracts and Procurement, Benefits and Medical Services, Economic Development, Public Information, the Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center, and then we have our Interagency Relations and Admin area. Under Finance and Budget, we have several teams. We have Accounting, Accounts Payable, Accounts Receivable, Budget, Fraud Investigations and Prevention, which works closely with DHS, and then Payroll. And of course, our accounting team, they're responsible for putting together our annual audit. They also do the Public Health Audit, the Britta Audit, the Fountain Valley Audit, and Public Health Audit. They do the Public Health Accounting and DHS Accounting. And then AP, they of course cut all of the checks and do wire transfers. Budget, they do the budgets over the annual budget, doing our Tabor calculations, our property tax calculations. And then Payroll, Payroll of course cuts paychecks for the entire county, about 2,600 employees, 200 part-time employees, and then they've been, the last few pay periods, been cutting checks for the election judges. Contracts and Procurement, they perform various services for departments and offices. It includes doing RFPs, requests for bid. And they do pre-bid and pre-proposal conferences. They set up evaluation committees after the bids have come in. They develop and negotiate contracts, and then they monitor the economy, the pricing, the products development. And then they also oversee the county surplus and property disposal. Our Benefits and Medical Services Division, they are over all of our health insurance, the wellness program, the life insurance programs, and they administer the Family and Medical Leave Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act. So when anybody comes in and they either have to go on FIML leave, or they have ADA concern, then Renee's team is who steps in with that and evaluates it. Our Economic Development Team, Deanne, she oversees the business incentives such as the Economic Development Zone, and then also community initiatives such as the CDBG Program. And then Housing, which, like the Family Turnkey Mortgage Program, she works closely with the Housing Authority and the Multifamily Mortgage Bond Program. Public Information, they provide information to the public and media. They provide all the audiovisual support for all of our meetings. They make sure our county website and other public information is up to date. And then the Colorado Opens Records Act, they coordinate all of those requests from the citizens and the media. The Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center, ACHA, is over that area, and she hosts several programs related to small businesses and startups. And they just recently moved over to Catalyst Campus. They're getting settled in over there, and they're over there with PTAC now. And we think that's really good fit for them over there. The Interagency Coordination Area and Administration, this is a couple of teams kind of grouped together here. They oversee the sales and use tax collections. They look at all of the data that comes in from the state and also from regional building. The other areas is disaster recovery. They're coordinating with the federal, state, and local areas to make sure all of our disaster recovery projects are moving forward. Special projects, any special projects that are requested by administration, then there's a team that works on those type of things. Impact Fee Program, they manage that. And then, of course, coordinate everything between the federal, state, and local municipalities that needs to be coordinated. And they provide administrative support to elected offices and officials. And that's where they oversee the admin folks over in your area, too. Laws and regulations, I won't go through these, but we fall under quite a few for different areas. Basically, we must abide by any laws that other department or offices need to adhere to because we need to account for all of their expenditures and make sure that we're following all the federal, state, and local laws on those. Our Strategic Plan Goals, our department falls under three goals. We're under Goal 1, Goal 2, and Goal 4, and we have been reporting on those quarterly. Operating Indicators, I'm not going to go through all of these, but we have several operating indicators related to our various responsibilities as a department. On this page is some that's related to finance, budget, contracts, and procurement, and PIO. On this page is some that are related to benefits and economic development. This page, we have some that's related to the DHS Fraud Investigation Team. As you can see, they're out there. They're identifying fraud. And then last year, they had proven fraud of $267,000. And we get incentives back on that whenever they prove something. And then this is the SBDC-specific indicators here for job creations, increased sales in the region, capital infusion. Our Department Highlights, some of our accomplishments, we're really proud of these first couple of them. The Award of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from our Finance Team, that's on our audit. And then the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, that's on our budget book. And that's, the budget book is the one that we just did at the first time for the 2017 budget in several years, and we did get that award. Right now, we're implementing the financial and budgetary software. That software, it helps to streamline the reporting requirements, and also a big potential use for transparency reporting. And then Economic Development has received approval from the Housing and Urban Development for a five-year consolidation plan. And then here's a few other highlights here, too, for other accomplishments. Some of the challenges that we have is that, we have year-round challenges. The Government Accounting Standards Board, they put out pronouncements. It used to be just one or two a year. Now we're getting quite a few. We've had to implement or review 86 to date. We have four that we need to implement during 2018, and then there's three more out there ready for review. And then we also have the ever-changing federal grant compliance rules. We have the Uniform Grant Guidance that came out just a couple of years ago. That replaced the A-87 and A-94, I think it was. It consolidated several different ones together that we used to have to follow pieces of. Now they're all in one place. But it's quite a bit to follow, and, you know, quite a few new rules that's been updated. Then we also have the Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, the SEC Compliance. And then one of our other big challenges is, you know, we're doing all of this while trying to hire and retain skilled professional-level employees and competing with the private Our base budget for the entire department, our total budget is 6.7 million for all of the divisions combined. But we utilize a lot of restricted reimbursement, so we look at, you know, what our teams are doing, and if there's any grant funds that we can use to offset general fund costs, we're doing that. And we have about $3.4 million that we're able to offset. So our net general fund cost for our department is $3.3 million. And we do not have any critical needs requested. So you have any questions? So you have any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Lilton.
Thank you. You definitely went through that quickly. Unlike our previous financial director. One of a few words. Can you go over, Sherri, page 14 again, where it was just talking about operating indicators for the fraud cases referred and investigated, identified fraud, proven fraud. Can you explain that a little bit more, fraud on what for whom? I mean, what are...
Yeah, our fraud investigations team works directly with DHS. So citizens can, they could call in and report suspected fraud, like if somebody is supposed to be a single household with children in it, but they find out they're really married and have somebody else who's in the home who's working and providing an income, then they can go out and investigate it. So they, last year they received about 500 referrals. If they find that there is fraud, then they can refer it to the district attorney's office, and then they could prosecute them.
All right, thanks. I just needed clarification where that came from. I didn't think, I wanted to make sure that we didn't have any fraud within El Paso County.
Oh, right, yes.
So just for the record, to put it out there. And I think, you know, just going to slide number 17 as well, I think for many of the accomplishments are, you know, certainly noteworthy, but just it has been, you know, especially exciting to see the CAS, you know, the commercial aeronautical zone expanded out there for incentivizing industry to come and to be here and be part of our airport, and I think it's going to help continue to hopefully lower costs out there as we see some of that. And then just, you know, certainly looking at the affordable housing here in Colorado Springs. I think that needs to be a story that's better told because I don't think that El Paso County gets enough credit for putting it out there on the types of things that we're doing to actually contribute to affordable housing here in El Paso County. Okay, thanks.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next contender. Good morning, I'm Jeff Eckhart with the IT Department. Happy to spend a few minutes with you this morning to talk about the IT budget for 2018. The IT Department is an internal service organization chartered to provide foundational technology services and to support El Paso County offices and departments. We basically connect the dots to make it possible for others in the county to do their Organized with a division of five, I brought my five division managers with me this morning. I'll introduce them one at a time. But those five divisions include infrastructure, products, customer support, information security, and technology administration. First up is our infrastructure division. I want to introduce Mr. Chuck Short, who leads this group. You can see the resources at his disposal required to deliver business services that employees pretty much expect now, right? Email, internet, telephones, network storage. Shortage of utilities, this is probably the primary work tools that people use to get their business done. So if the power's out, you pretty much send your employees home. If your technology's out, you pretty much send your employees home, too. So we have two county-owned and operated data centers, as well as a fiber network that connects those, that makes delivering these services possible. Thank you to Chuck and for his team for outstanding work in that area. Next up is our products division. Ms. Jessica Caesar is our products portfolio manager. These are the centralized systems that let economy of scale happen. So we have one payroll system, one financial system, a central mapping, a central time and attendance system. Having multiple departments use a single system is the most cost-effective way to administer multi-user, large platform technologies. Next up is customer support, Mr. Kelly Mundell. Kelly's pretty new to that role, but provides the day-to-day support, a 24-by-7 help desk. So we're available to help the 24-by-7 operations. If a router goes out in a closet at the jail, we have to be available and dispatch resources to get that back up. This group also is responsible for PC support, our replacement programs, managing devices, peripherals called printers and scanners, mobile devices, and telephone programming as well. Our newest division is information security. Proud to have Mr. Steve Mack with us. Steve is our information security manager. It took me 12 months to get an information security manager, so to have him sitting here is a huge relief, and I'll be revisiting that concept in just a few more slides. Steve's responsible for our entire cybersecurity program and roadmap, firewalls, intrusion protection. You can see the whole list. He's also very involved in our compliance efforts, which I'll talk about in just a minute. Lastly, Mr. Eric Blakesley does technology administration. Probably the, one of the key areas here is software license compliance, and this is an increasing in importance as we have fewer on-premise software licenses, and we now have to have cloud-based licensing, securing those things. So there's a lot of technology cost optimization that happens in Eric's area. He is responsible and struggles daily with our staffing challenges, and is also responsible for technology capital asset management. So these are some compliance mandates that county IT cooperates with. County IT data centers host critical and sensitive data for public safety, employees, and citizens that must be strictly protected with the latest information security controls. And for all of these mandates, there's a technology component. Technology is required to make that happen. Though we cooperate extensively with our partners in the sheriff's office and benefits and finance and their compliance officer to make sure that the technology and the policy match up so that we are maintaining strict compliance with these mandates. IT falls under Goal Three, Strategy B of the strategic plan. We have nine objectives. Develop mobile applications for direct public access to county programs. Implement a 3-1-1-type web-based information system that is not a brick-and-mortar 3-1-1. That is, that will be exclusively a digital, online-only, and I think you'll hear more about that in 2018. Implement a comprehensive technology security program. That effort kicked off in March of this year, but it's a multi-year program, and it requires a significant roadmap there. Expand fiber optic networks to improve operational continuity. I reported out to you about a week or so ago about our progress there. Replace unsupported analog telephone systems with next-generation network-based phone systems. You've heard the term VoIP sometimes. This is what VoIP is, and we're very, very happy that we'll be turning off our old analog phone system in December, retiring that contract and an onsite contract resource, and ultimately experiencing some cost savings there. I think I'm way behind you on the slide, sorry. Okay. Define and implement acceptable use policies for technology, systems, devices, and operations. This is the human factor of IT, and we'll be working a lot with the county attorney's office in strengthening our policies here so that we have clear expectations on the employee digital life. What can you and can't you do with county devices? This is an emerging and evolving area, and one that we will be working, like I said, with Amy to develop some policy there. I'm going to walk through with you five IT budget drivers, and it's important to note that before I go into these, I will not be asking for additional funding or critical needs, but more like laying the groundwork for you for future years. The first one of those is county-wide productivity and efficiency gains are realized through IT investments. When you keep the labor budget constant and the overall base budget constant, IT accounts for 54% of annual labor productivity gains. So if you want to do more with less, if you want to experience efficiencies, if you want to have an optimized organization, it's the IT investments that you make with existing resources that make that possible. And as you've heard, there's been a long line of folks come up and talk about their technology initiatives. It's difficult to think of any business function, office, or department that can reach its goals and objectives without technology. The second budget driver for you to consider is the IT investments accrue outside the IT department. And I want to show you some utilization charts that demonstrate this. This is, this particular graph shows you network accounts by department and office. So anytime an employee onboards or offboards or has a password reset, these offices and departments are using baseline IT services to make that happen. This graph shows you service requests by office and department, also showing you how there's a day-to-day utilization of IT investments across the entire organization. And thirdly, these are the centralized applications. This is that economy of scale. This is where we get the greatest bang for our IT buck because you've got multiple offices using a single system, so those baseline costs can be spread out across more business Driver number three, the county realizes the greatest value through investments in central IT. Economies of scale produce cost advantages with cost per IT commodity decreasing with utilization across more business units. Underfunding central IT increases shadow IT. Shadow IT is IT spend by non-IT business units because business managers will always find a way. If IT doesn't have the budget or the resources to provide a service and it's critical to an office or department, they will find a way to make that happen. The problem with that is, is that shadow IT does not offer any economies of scale and enters more risk into the enterprise because security, licensing, compliance, and business continuity are not properly vetted by non-IT business managers. Number four, demand for IT is exceeding supply. We have done a tremendous amount of work in this county with optimizing existing resources, squeezing the sponge, getting the most that we can out of existing investments. But the rate of IT growth and the rate of IT demand is exceeding any known cost optimizations that can further fund those differences, right? So what I'm saying here is, we have doubled down, we have stretched, we have made systems work longer, we have delayed replacement programs, but there's a certain critical point at which that's no longer going to be adequate, and we'll need to have additional IT investments to keep up with the fast, rapid pace of technology. Anytime a department or an office brings you a new technology purchase, let's say it's 1 million, you can expect 20% of that cost to be an ongoing legacy cost in the IT department, supporting its security, its upgrades, its patching, right? So more and more offices and departments use technology to become more efficient, but there's a legacy cost to the IT department that has to be considered. And as you know, and if you've heard, there's huge investments right now in digital operations that are going to dramatically increase the operating portion of IT spend. Here's just a quick chart for you. On the left showing samples or examples of IT demand. There's probably twice as many I could have put on here. And on the right, some of the paradigms that have capped IT supply. One example is the cybersecurity program I mentioned earlier. We were able to basically create that entire program with cost optimization and savings in the IT department. We did not come and ask for additional positions. We did not come and ask for additional budget. We were able to carve that out of existing operations, but I'm just fearful that those days are over, and as the IT cybersecurity needs increase, we're going to be coming back to you asking for additional resources. My last budget driver is it's increasingly difficult to recruit and retain qualified IT professionals. And this is fairly recent data. I just got this report from Mercer and the Gartner IT Jobs and Skills Survey. It was completed in October of 2017. Nationwide, the unemployment rate is 4.5%. That's basically full employment. If you consider that the technology unemployment rate is 2.5%, basically every able-bodied individual who's capable of working in the technology field is employed, which means there's a greater demand on keeping your own people, your qualified people, and it makes recruiting and retention that much harder. I talked about Steve. It took us 12 full months. We did a cybersecurity, information security manager posting last fall, fall of 2016. We received one applicant who was not qualified. So in the time since then, we looked at other more, I would say, innovative ways to recruit that, and through contracting service and some professional services, we were able to finally get Steve convinced to head our cyber program. So again, I'm very encouraged to see that. El Paso County competes directly for technology talent against the local private sector, front-range governments, military and defense industry, Springs Utilities, the city of Colorado Springs, Douglas County. So while others might be able to say it's nuts that we can look up and down the front range, the IT knowledge worker will travel for the right money, and it's happened. And so we need to be very supportive of human capital needs because ultimately, we're going to be missing out on top technology talent if we continue with compensation inequities with our peer organizations. IT 27-based budget, 11.3 million. We received an increase of 200,000 from finance through some operational savings that they experienced. We were able to transfer a line of business employees, somebody who was doing more DHS-centric work to DHS, and so that function was transferred over, showing a net decrease, giving us a 2018 preliminary budget of just shy of 11.5 million dollars. With that, there's a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Questions? Commissioner Vanderweil.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks very much for the presentation. I know it's a challenge, you know, in the IT world, particularly cybersecurity. But on chart 21, the last one, just want to make sure I understand. So the 2017 budget, 11, 3, 24 and change, 2018, 11, 4, 80. You said there was an increase in cost for the Microsoft Office upgrades, or was, is that what I heard you say?
So the $200,000 is a 2018 additional budget to upgrade the existing versions of Microsoft Office in the county. We have, we have over 30 copies of Microsoft Office 2003 operational, and so it's time to get some of those older, I would say, less secure, unsupported versions of Office out of our environment. And so it was through finance and through their cost savings that we were able to get that done.
So that 200,000 is a budget requirement to address that?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you transferred an FTE. So the difference there is 155 and change, and that sounds like an increase in budget requirement for '18. So you're not asking for additional budget? So what's the discrepancy between those two?
It is. It's an increase.
Commissioners, the 200,000 for information technology is going to be an increase to their budget for 2018, and we're funding that through increased cost allocation. So each year when we go through the cost allocation plan, and we assess what the annual costs are for each of the years, and for each of the departments, we go through and determine what that cost is, and then if we receive additional cost allocation dollars for that specific function and service, we are able to reallocate that to that specific department to support that function. So that would happen through, through the general fund. I don't think, I think the auditors, if I'm not mistaken, changed it from a revenue line item to a reimbursement line item through our most recent GASB. So it actually comes through as a reimbursement of an expenditure through a pass-through account in the general fund, and then we are able to reallocate that so that the spending authority for IT is increased to address that, and it's all within those federal guidelines.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Any other questions? Commissioner Lilton.
Thank you. Jeff, I wanted to just ask, I'm trying to find which slide it's on here. So on slide 19, where we're talking about, you know, looking at cybersecurity and OIT, looking at, you said it was really a people problem, being proactively engaged in helping our county employees know what to do, what they can't do, and I certainly have... And I certainly appreciate it, you know, just whenever we get emailed, it's from outside of Al Paso County that it's flagged. However, I'm wondering if we even need to be more proactive and have, you know, people that are new hires that come on, walk through a course or something that really shows them what the protocol and process and procedures are here for accessing it and why, and then to go back and, and begin working through some of the other departments for that. I don't know if there could be, you know, just a short little YouTube video that would be created that actually would go out to each one of the employees that is a required watch before they're able to log on, you know? I mean, something, you know, so that people can really be informed because I think so many of the mistakes that are probably made are just out of ignorance as opposed to intentional mistakes, so.
Yeah, so we will be launching a comprehensive employee education program, similar to what you go through with harassment. It'll be an annual program. It'll be additive, meaning there'll be a base year, and then as you learn those foundation concepts, we'll add on to that. So that by, say, year four and five, we may be actively trying to put out a campaign where, let's say, you accidentally click on a link, but it's us giving you that link to educate you further. So that is part of the cybersecurity roadmap. We're evaluating different education providers, but it will become an annual required employee training.
Okay. I'm glad to hear, I'm glad to hear that, so. And I'm pretty sure that Kelly's glad that after seven years, you can teach an old dog new tricks, and I don't see you as often anymore.
Any other questions? Great, thank you very much. I think we're down to our last one for the day.
Wait, I have a schedule.
Yes?
This never happens.
Never happens.
I guess I'm the cleanup hitter, so the pressure's on me, I guess, huh? Good morning, everybody. Tom Feifley with the retirement plan. I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of kind of where we've been and where we're going and what we, what we're looking at as the future. Let's see, I hope I can do this. Today, I'm just going to be going through, like I said, kind of our plan history and some of our recent history and things that we've done, where we stand right now, and give you an update on where we've made some changes and where that looks when we look at the projecting of the future of the retirement plan. So right now, we've reached our 50th birthday. We were established in 1967 by statute. We are a defined benefit plan under both federal and state statute. We have a five-member voting board, as you can see there, but we also have two, what I call associate or adjunct members, that are from our largest employers, from both the Pike's Peak Library and from the Sheriff's Office, or excuse me, DA's office, excuse me, that consist of our board. And we meet on the last Monday of every month over at the RDC building in the hearing room. As you can see, we are a multi-employer plan. We have those five employers that we collect contributions routinely every payday from. We are a mandatory program, which means nobody gets to sign up for this or waive themselves out of it. They have to mandatorily participate if they're a full-time employee. And right now, the retirement board has fixed the contribution rate at 8% for employees, and that is matched by the county on a dollar-for-dollar basis to come up with a total fixed contribution rate per employee of 16% overall. We now have an eight-year vesting period. Previously, it was five prior to 2013, but as you can see, for all new hires, 1113 or after, they now have to meet higher vesting requirements. We use accrual calculations through our actuaries to determine benefits, and everything worked as a percentage of pay. We use an accrual formula for each year worked, and right now, that accrual percentage is 2% for every year they work. Eligibility for retirement is determined by a number of years worked and age. You've heard the rule of 75, I'm sure, bandied about around the county, but one of those numbers, obviously, in order to come up with their number of 75, has to be that eight-year vesting requirement. Just some stats, as you can see, for the current year, we have just over 4,300 total planned participants between active employees and retirees, and you can see others that are vested termination, meaning deferred vested employees that vested more than, say, five or eight years, but didn't hit immediate eligibility under either the rule of 75 or normal retirement age. Some statistics for you there, mainly to see current trends are trending on a downward basis, which is good for average age for the plan. For a mature plan, we're actually getting younger, which is, which is a good sign, I think, for the overall financial stability and underpinnings of this plan. And as you can see, the retiring average is starting to creep up a little bit. We're at 69.2. That's also maturing as we go forward. And the retirement average monthly benefit has gone up slightly, about $30 from the previous year at 1513. So just some recent history, through the financial downturn in 2008, we see, we saw a number of things happen in the U.S. market, filtered down and hit retirement plans fairly hard as well, especially in the governmental sector. We have got, we have increased our annual contributions on a percentage of pay rate from employees from 6% to 8% over a gradual period from, I think, 2010 through 2014. You can see there, the dollar match is dollar-for-dollar from the employer, from you or the county, so that totals, again, 16% of total wages. We reduced the multiplier for every year worked. We used to be at 2.22% for every year for an accrual. We dropped that to 2% for all employees from 2013 going forward. And then for a cost, excuse me, and other consolidation purposes, we eliminated a three-tiered multiplier for various tiers of employment within the county for all service after 2012. So we have a much simpler plan now in order to administer. And again, as you can see there, as I alluded to earlier, we increased our vesting requirements from five to eight years, and we also dropped our maximum accrued percentage that you can use as a percentage of your pay from 75% of your pay down to 60% for all new employees after 1113. So right now, what that really means in real numbers is, at 2% a year, at 60% cap, you max out on your benefit roughly after 30 years of county service. Other things we've done, in 2014, we wanted to make sure that we were being good stewards of the plan's money, and so what we did is we saved an FTE equivalent on an annual basis by going with a new BUCK system. And what that does is, it allows participants to go out on an online, true and live environment and run any computation they want for any prospective potential retirement date they want to choose. So that, in a sense, saved us an FTE equivalent for having somebody there to man the phone, run the calculations for those people that call, and those things asked, actually saved us that, as you can see, FTE equivalent for efficiencies by going three staffed down to two. I currently have three staff right now because, as you may or may not know, my assistant Dana is going to retire in 2013, or 2018, excuse me, in February. So, and because only certain things happen once, one time a year for actuarial audits and financial audits and those types of things, we had to have somebody, parallel Dana, for a year in order to see what was going to happen going forward once she retires. And as you can see there, we continue to weigh cost and benefit on all investment choices we make, whether it be in different asset classes, whether large cap, mid-cap, small cap, alternative investments, whatever it be. And as you can see, against our peers, we're the largest plan as far as assets and membership, but we also have some of the smallest costs as far as overall investment cost for the investment choices that we make, and we're very proud of that. Currently, just to kind of give you some things, where we are right now, we did an experience analysis about four-plus years ago in 2013, and right now, because of that experience analysis, we made some assumption changes to our plan and some design changes. And as you can see now, it's improving our overall accuracy and projecting changes needed. And obviously, our overall goal would be to return to 100% funding of this plan within 30 years. Our next experience analysis is going to be conducted next year. We do this in a five-year revolving period. That seems to be kind of the best practice within the retirement industry. So we'll, we'll spend that money to get another experience analysis to make sure our assumptions for things like employee retention, or when they retire, or when they actually apply for retirement, how long they live after retirement, those types of things will be projected through actuarial tables and actuarial analysis to make sure that whatever our assumptions are, they meet those, those assumptions that we're doing as a plan. And as you can see there, those are the things that we updated from the past 2013 analysis. We looked at termination rates, salary projections, retirement rates, and overall mortality, because as you know, through increases in technology and other things, people are living longer. So as a retirement system, we focus on that mortality rate, as you can see, very closely. So right now, you can see kind of an upward trend in our actual variational, actuarial evaluations. As a percentage funded, we hit kind of a peak there in 2008, and after the 2008 downturn, that one year, you can see, we went from 91% to 75% just in one year. So we've been struggling to get our way back, but as you can see, we're starting from, say, 2013 forward, we're making that slow incremental increase. And right now, the rate of return for the plan for this year, for 2017, is projected to be right roughly 12%. We're getting about 1% a month. So so far, President Trump has been good overall for the retirement plan. Right now, I know that we're 71% funded, but obviously, with our goal of 100% funded, we need to get there, and we need to get there within 30 years. So we know that we have to review a number of things within the retirement plan, its design and its assumptions, to make sure that we can meet our targeted goal within 30 years, which is, again, to get to 100% actual funding of the, of the plan. And those are all the things that we're going to look at in the coming months to look and see that, do we have the appropriate rate flow as far as contribution rates? Do we have the appropriate investments in place, given the marketplace we're in right now? Our benefits and expenses are those in line with what we would experience, and not only with us, but with other retirement plans within either the state of Colorado or nationally. And just to show you kind of here, as a mature plan, this, at first glance, could be a little bit shocking, but as a mature plan, this doesn't necessarily shock me. As you can see, our contributions every year are increasing, but so are our benefits. Luckily, as you can see, in '27 and '28, those line items, the county is helping us reimburse those administrative costs of running the plan. And as you can see, for 2018, the budget line item is calling for that 1,500,000, and we're very appreciative of that as well. Benefits, though, as you can see, continue on an upward trend. Our expenses are holding steady, and our annual cash flow, as you can see there, is also increasingly in the red. But a lot of investment return hopefully will mitigate that and lower that overall gap. At 12% this year, we're hopeful that, that will increase that $13 million negative number into something closer to zero if we can.
Yeah, that's good.
So as I said, we've already made some changes, and we've looked at our plan performance since 2013. And from those data, I know this is, this slide is a little bit confusing, but in 2013, you can see where we were projected on both 10, 10-year ratios if we had done nothing. So at that point, we were, we're going to be down in the low 60s with some of the changes that we made that I just showed to you as far as increasing our vesting requirements and some of those types of things and lowering the accrual percentage. Now, we are now at 70% for 2016, and 2026 in 10 years will be, will be down to 69.1 or holding steady if things continue on. And for 2017, we increased slightly our funded percentage in a 10-year accrual on that one as far as a projection, we're at 71.4. So you can see kind of what we're doing. That's the reason we're looking at some of other changes in both our design and our assumptions and our investments in the coming weeks and months. So for the future, we know that we're stable. We've been hanging around 70% for two or three years now. The plan, however, is becoming more mature. We are going to hit probably our maximum number of retirees and benefit payments probably within that next decade. So with that, we know that it's going to be important to not only hit our 100% funding goal in 30 years, but we also have a 10-year goal that we want to hit 80%. So if we can do that and put us on a glide path to 100% funding in 30, one, one way we measure that is to make sure that we can get 80% by that 2024 date. So as you can see, I alluded to a number of things that the retirement board will probably look at in the next weeks and months. Some of those things are included there for you to look at, and I know a lot of those things are things you've probably heard from your constituency as far as rates of return overall in the retirement plan. If we do that, if we drop that, you can see what that does to our funding ratio if we do that. We'll probably look at lowering the inflation rate a full percentage point because 3.5% has been kind of the CAPM model historically for inflation in the U.S. market over the last 30 to 50 years, but we seem to be in a new environment now. And with that, I think inflation has been fairly well under control. And so with that, we'll probably look at lowering that as well. And then depending on how the market goes in the next few weeks and months, are there anything in the investment strategies and investments themselves that we have to change? Well, we'll be looking at those as well. So in summary, as you can see, the fund is still, you know, fairly stable, but obviously below the levels necessary for ultimate sustainability for the long-term future. We'd like to get that up to 100% within the next 30 years. And as you can see, we've done a slight improvement over the, over the past year, but our actuarial, actuaries compute the actual total percentage of pay that we should be putting in to fully fund our commitments is at 16.39%. So we're that 4/10ths of a percentage, slightly behind that. And really, most of that has been picked up by equity performance over the last, say, three to five years. Since 2011, I know we've seen a big uptick in the equity market, and a lot of that has been mitigated by the performance of the equity markets, but we're still in that slightly negative position. So it's going to become more and more important, obviously, with that flattening out, we're seeing some of that flattening within the equity market currently. Those will make the importance of making that 16.4% contribution rate even more and more important. Are there any questions for me at this point?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I hear we're stable, but on page, can we go back to page 14? So our contributions are only going up, you know, a million and a half, then 2 million. Benefits are growing at 5 million a year. So at what year do we expect a, to reach a net zero there?
As far as total flow?
Yes, because I see contributions not exceeding, or benefits not exceeding contributions.
Okay. At this point, with a mature plan, you will see that in the negative until prior, past 2026 as a mature plan, you're going to, you're on a bell curve. So as you go up the bell curve, you're going to hit your maximum number of employees that retire roughly in that 2026 area.
2026.
And then at that point, it'll start decreasing. So you'll start seeing that narrowing between benefits and revenue once we hit after 2026.
Okay, so when, when is it net zero? So it's sometime after 2026?
I would assume so. I don't have the projections in front of me, but at that point, that's what I would expect.
All right, thanks.
I have a quick question, if that's all right. I was just wondering, what, what happens to the employees that don't make the eight-year vesting requirement? What happens to their contribution and the county contribution?
Okay. The county contribution, just like social security, if you fund social security, you as an employer have to match that, and the employees also have to contribute dollar-for-dollar. The match stays in the plan, doesn't ever go to the employees. The employees track their contribution plus interest, that always is theirs to take if they want to, when they leave. If they leave prior to vesting, either five or eight years, depending on when they started employment. If they are not vested, the plan document and federal regulation both say that we can't leave non-vested money in the plan. So they have to take it out. They can do it one of two ways. They can take a direct withdrawal, which means take it as cash and pay the applicable taxes and penalties at the time, or they can roll it over to some other tax-deferred plan, like a 401K or 457 or an IRA.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Littleton.
Okay. You go.
Thank you. Commissioners, I just wanted to clarify to Commissioner Gonzalez this point. What Mr. Feifley had spoke to when he originally presented this slide, what this doesn't include, which is a key line item, is what the annual rate of return is and the return on investment each year. So really, if you were to take the contributions, add the county's expense reimbursement, take the benefits and the expenses, and then add in the, the rate of return and the earnings on our, that we earn on the open market, and add that in, that annual cash flow amount would be much less. And so if we were to, to show you that slide, you would see that it's nowhere near the 13.3 million annually. And then also, just to clarify, on the 1,500,000 per budget policy, you authorize up to 600,000 general fund. So the other 450,000 of that is coming from restricted funds for a total of 1,500,000. So out of general fund, you are actually only contributing 600,000. I just want to clarify that because that is in your policy, and that is the only hard number that we have in your, in your budget policy.
Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you. I think, you know, having been the liaison for the retirement board for many years, except for this year, we talked a lot about, you know, moving into a hybrid model, you know, from defined benefit to, I don't know where that is at this point in time, you can discuss that. And then the second thing, we also kind of talked about raising, I know at one point in time, we did raise and possibly raising again the retirement age at which you can withdraw.
Okay. And I think, as you've seen on that slide that I presented toward the end of my presentation, those are some of the things that we'll those are some of the things that we'll, we'll look at probably in the near term. Long term, I think some of the things you're describing are absolutely things that the retirement board will look at. Do we need to look at adjusting the retirement age? Right now, it's tied at age 62 because that's where social security is tied. Early benefits for social security are available at age 62. Do we need to move that out? Do we move to 65 or 66 or 67? Some of those types of things. Those items, I'm sure the board will want to hear and see with their actuaries and plan that and see what we would get if we moved on some of those items, absolutely.
Any other questions? Commissioner Vanderwerken.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that a long time ago, right, we, we went to a separate plan here, different from PRA. So how do we compare, in comparison to PRA, just generally speaking, and really kind of the, the general number that I have that interest in is kind of the funded ratio? What's the funded ratio for PRA today?
Well, PRA, as you may or may not know, is a combination of a number of different state plans. So it depends on how you measure PRA. PRA, for the most part, if you measured all their retirement plans combined, is in the high 50s to low 60s percentage as far as funded ratio. Senate Bill 1 and some of those things that they've gotten funding on over the last, say, three to five years, that the state legislature has helped that. There, as you can probably read or hear in the news lately, there's another plan that PRA has to address their funding, but they're now going to go through with the legislature and see if that is going to fly. If it does, I assume that that will also improve its long-term viability as well. But right now, I would say there are probably a couple points either side of 60, depending on how you measure them.
All right. So the 70.2%,
Yeah.
which is where we're at in 2017, certainly is not where we want to be.
No.
But it's a lot better than where we could have been had we stayed with PRA, right?
Yeah, if you stay with PRA, there's, there's a number of things. Obviously, you alluded to one of them, which is the funded percentage. But also, PRA is a FICA replacement plan. And so by participating both locally in, in social security and in the retirement plan, they don't face an offset when they retire and receive their social security benefit. They do if they do, if they go with PRA.
Okay, thanks.
You bet.
Any other questions? Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, Nicola, any other budget presentations today?
Oh, no, Commissioner, sorry. Turned my ankle there. We are done for today. We will be back Thursday. We will, I think we have a 9:30 kickoff on Thursday. You will have the rest of the presentations at that point. Again, you will hear from your citizen outreach group, and then it will all wrap up with my presentation, where we will present the financial roadmap and then some details. I have been having one-on-one conversations with, with all of you to make sure that, that my presentation will try to include everything that, that you've articulated through these hearings. And then, of course, on December 5th, we'll have extensive discussion and receive direction from this board on how to proceed with the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other department and committee reports? Okay, item 13.
There is no addendum today.
Item 14.
No request for executive session.
All right, we are adjourned.